5:01, we are all here this evening. We only have one item on the agenda, and I, again, counsel, will all refrain from asking questions until the staff presentation are complete or until they pause and say they want to hear from us. So, let's go on with Public Works Director Javier. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Mayor and council, we thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you this evening. As you know, the Integrated Water Master Plan, or IWMP as we know it, is an important document that will help us understand how we will manage the development.
Does that sound, coming through, to anybody good? It kind of sounds like an echo for here. Are you getting echo? I'm getting an echo.
How about now? Same?
Let's try it. Go ahead.
Okay. It will help us understand how we will manage the development and certainly the sustainability of our most critical resource, which is water. We used to think that there were different types of water: potable water, wastewater or sewage, and reclaimed water. The reality is that a drop of water has a lot of value, no matter in what phase it is. The trick is to make sure that we maintain the value of the water by retaining that drop and bringing it back for use again, again, and again. This evening, get a little closer to me, this evening, we are here to share ideas with you and look forward to your questions, your comments, your validation of our work, and certainly your direction. In a few minutes, I will be introducing to mayor and council the team that helped us put this plan together. But before I do that, I'd like to share with you the main topics for this evening. In concept, putting together a master plan is a monumental effort. This effort becomes even more complex in a dynamic environment like ours, where ever-emerging city opportunities, ever-changing national economics, and questions on the availability of essential resources are central factors in the plan. Our team has been actively working at gathering data over the last couple of years. In fact, the beginning of the effort precedes some of us. But we are here today to share lots of information in a very short time. We have formatted a presentation with a break about halfway to allow for questions and comments, and with the goal of getting as much input as we can from you, and then coming back later in the year, by the end of the month, asking council for final adoption of the plan. The city has and will continue to see significant growth. That is a fact. The question revolves around where and when that growth will take place. To help us create a better way of capturing this growth, the plan divided the city in several planning areas. This division allowed us to capture the challenges and opportunities in each of those areas individually. As you know, water resources is the foundation of our future. We're here to say that we are in a good place, where with smart growth policies, with integration of designs that promote conservation, with swift implementation of critical projects, and with regional collaboration to solve long-term issues, Goodyear can support growth for many years ahead. And the future will bring even more opportunities that will allow this city a path to build out. I also wanted to mention that although tonight we will not be discussing the needs of our existing infrastructure, the city has already benefited from the information developed in the early stages of this plan. We brought to mayor and council back in October of 2015 a request for approval of a five-year rate plan that funded needed improvements to our existing infrastructure. The list of improvements needed were developed by work done in the IWMP that is in front of you today. And I'd like to say that several of those projects are underway, and in fact, we've already completed some of them. Finally, how to support future growth is a focus of this evening's discussion. The IWMP has identified many projects that are needed to extend our infrastructure to areas where growth is needed, but there's one essential need that needs to be addressed. This is the need to bring surface water directly to the city. We will present to you why this must happen and what are some great options to accomplish this goal. Thank you. Of course, this is a team effort, and many people contributed to their time and resources to get us to where we are today. First, I'd like to thank mayor and council for seeing the value of the IWMP back in 2014 and approving the project. So again, thank you. Also, support and direction from city leadership has been essential as the team reached very often those forks on the road where crucial decisions had to be made. As I said before the start of this project, precedes some of us, so I'd like to thank those in Public Works that launched this effort. That includes Mr. Bob Beckley, and I'm sure you remember him, and Mr. Mark Holmes, who's not here with us today. He's out traveling around the world somewhere.
Oh, it's a joyful one?
Yes, yes, yes. He's having fun. And his team to continue to be an integral part of this plan. I'll also like to thank Gretchen Irwin and Barbara Chappell, who are sitting back here behind us. They have also brought lots of value to the plan in the areas of utility operations and water resources, and Barbara and Gretchen are part of the Public Works team. The team also included other city departments that helped us gather information, share ideas, and make decisions. We thank the leadership and the staff of those departments for their support. And let's not forget the direct contribution of our citizens. In the early stages, as they helped us assess the current infrastructure needs and develop solutions to maintain reliability and increase redundancy of the system. Finally, I'd like to thank the Corolla team, our consulting team, Lisa Freestone, who's right here next to me, Richard Humphries, and Eric McCleskey, who are back there as well. Lisa just joined the team, and she hit the ground running helping us wrap up this project. Again, we'll thank you for your attention tonight, and I will turn over the presentation to Lisa.
Good evening. So, before we get started on discussing some of the outcomes of the plans, I want to just briefly review the master plan purpose. The master plan set out to establish three key items for the city. The first one would be to develop a sustainable water resource plan, look at your water resources portfolio, where you stood, and what your future looked like with water resources. The second was plan an orderly expansion of facilities, supporting smart growth, recommending what those facilities should look like in the future for the city. And then finally, prepare that roadmap for that plan for your capital improvement projects. But before we could actually get started looking at the water master plan for the city, we worked to understand the city's general plan. The city's general plan provides the foundation for key assumptions used to develop the Integrated Water Master Plan. So we looked at the general plan, we looked at the land use plans, we looked at the land areas, we looked at the projected populations, and brought those into our key decisions as we move forward with the water planning effort. So, in the past, utilities used to do individual plans for each of their water components. Municipalities would set forth, and they would do a water resources plan, they would prepare a water plan, they would prepare a separate wastewater plan, and even a reclamation plan. But this process, the integrated water planning process, allowed us to provide comprehensive recommendations for the city. And this integrated process considers water as one water. It's looking at a combination of the resource from its water resource state, as it's treated through your facilities, as it generates wastewater flows, and it creates reclaimed water opportunities. It allows to look at that drop, one of your most valuable assets here in the cities, as one complete picture, so that we can provide comprehensive planning going forward. Another aspect of integrated water planning is including all of the agencies or the groups within your city and the outer ring of this graphic that you see here. As Javier noted, we included Public Works, Engineering, Economics, the Finance Department, city leadership, and of course, your Citizen Advisory Committee participated early in the plan. But this allows all facets of the city to get an understanding, provide input and buy-in in the plan going forward, so that's certainly a benefit of the integrated process. So also, as Javier noted, our master plan was considered two phases. The current customers, which he noted, was presented to you back in February of 2015 and were incorporated into your replan, or your rate plan update, in October of 2014. That process that I had discussed in the previous plan was implemented with that phase, but also in the future growth phase going forward. So as we began to look at the future growth places, we needed to step back and look at your water planning areas, and I'm going to ask Richard Humphries to come up and discuss a little bit more on your planning areas, planning horizons, and your water resources
Good evening. An understanding of the different planning areas within the city is important for the water resources and infrastructure planning. If you look at this map here, you can see the outline of the city's planning area, and in each of the different planning area names, starting with WPA-1 through WPA-5. WPA-1 represents the land area north of Interstate 10 that would receive water from Liberty Utilities and from Epcor, and the Liberty Utilities portion of that area is served by the city on the wastewater side. Planning Area 2 is the main part of what is Goodyear today, between Interstate 10 and the Gila River. And then Planning Area 3 is what you would know as the Stray Mountain Ranch, between the Gila River and Pecos Road. Planning Area 4 is not developed at all at this time, but it's between Pecos Road and Patterson Road. And then the southern area is Planning Area 5 down south of Patterson Road. And the plan and the infrastructure and the water supply for each of these is a little bit different. We have three planning horizons that we use in the master plan. First of all, the five-year plan is where things are pretty well-defined. We can see into the future and often know quite a bit about what is going on and where development is going to be and so on in that area. If we go out 10 years, there's still a lot that is very well-defined, but there's a little bit more uncertainty. And then if we go out to build out, obviously, there are many areas of uncertainty that we just don't have all the information on at this point. But it's important to also consider build-out in our planning, so we know what things are going to look like when everything is fully developed. For this master plan, Planning Areas 2 and 3 is where most of the growth is expected over the next 10 years, and so that's the focus of a lot of the capital improvements that we're going to recommend in the master plan. Then future growth is in Planning Area 4 first, and I know there are plans being made to begin developing in parts of Planning Area 4. And then Planning Area 5 is farther out there in time with a lot less that is defined at this point in time. Now let's talk about the water resources needed to serve these areas. And in discussing the water resources, I'm going to talk about surface water supplies, groundwater supplies, recharge with reclaimed water, and then water conservation. So we'll step through each one of those. To begin with, let's talk about the surface water supply, which can provide water for growth for the city of Goodyear for the next 25 years. On this graph, the x-axis represents time from 2015 to 2040, and the y-axis represents water use in acre-feet per year. And if you look at the green area, the shaded area, that represents the amount of groundwater that the city is legally able to withdraw in Planning Areas 2 and 3. And you can take up to 13,191 acre-feet per year from the ground in that area. Now, if we look at the water demand projections over time, which is what this black line represents, you can see that the demand is increasing as you have additional growth. At about year 2020, or somewhere in that vicinity, as you can see, you're going to need some additional water supplies. And we are suggesting and proposing that the next increment of water supply be provided by a surface water treatment plant that has a Phase 1 with a capacity of 8 million gallons per day. And so the blue shaded area represents that additional water supply, and these are from water rights that the city already has, but you're not able to fully benefit from them yet because you don't have a physical way to deliver water to the city of Goodyear. And then at about year 2030, according to this projection, that 8 MGD will be fully allocated, and so there is another 8 MGD in a Phase 2 of a surface water treatment plant that could provide additional water supplies out until approximately year 2040. And the city also has that water right, they just need the capability to transport and treat that water to the city of Goodyear. And so as you can see by this graph with those projections, if the city is able to put in a surface water treatment plant, you'll be able to provide an additional water supply to support growth and the citizens' needs within the city. Now let's talk about the groundwater component of the city's water resources. On this map that you can see here, there is the outline of the city of Goodyear planning area, and you can see where Planning Areas 2 and 3 are located. We've also identified the 13,191 acre-feet per year of groundwater that is legally available to you. The upper dashed yellow and black line represents the West Salt River Valley Groundwater Subbasin, which is the groundwater basin that the city of Goodyear shares with your neighboring communities as far as being able to take water from the ground. Now, if you look farther to the south, there is the Rainbow Valley Groundwater Subbasin that covers Planning Areas 4 and 5. And the water in that area has been allocated primarily to developers. There's a total of 40,700 acre-feet per year of physically available groundwater in Rainbow Valley. Of that, all has been allocated to developers, with the exception of a small amount, something less than 400 acre-feet per year. Now, in time, as development occurs and the city takes over and begins delivering water to the developments in Planning Areas 4 and 5, those allocations that are currently assigned to developers will come back to the city as a part of your water resource. So now, if we look at reclaimed water and recharged water, reclaimed water is an important source of water for the city because it is a way to replenish the aquifers. If you see on this diagram, there's a well just to the right of the home there, which represents the wells where you would pump water out of the ground, and, you know, without some replenishment, aquifer levels would decrease. But you can replenish that water through constructed recharge facilities, which would be spreading bases, which allow water to infiltrate into the ground. There's a small amount of what we call incidental recharge, which is overirrigation or rainfall that allows water to percolate into the ground and eventually reach the aquifer. You can also recharge water with Vado-sown wells, such as the ones the city has that are being constructed, that allows you to take water, such as reclaimed water, and put it back into the ground to replenish and maintain the aquifers. And so it's important, as the city goes forward, to be able to maximize the benefit of these reclaimed water resources for aquifer replenishment. Before we talk about water conservation, let's step back for just a second and look at where your water is used currently. This pie chart shows how water is used within the city, and 60% -- 60 to 70% of the annual use actually occurs outdoors. So you can see the largest component of that is single-family outdoor water use, which is 34% of the city's total water use. There is irrigation of parks and green spaces, which accounts for another 28%. Single-family interior use is about 17% of your total water use, and then the remaining, roughly 1/4, is taken up by industrial, commercial, municipal construction, and multifamily uses. So when you begin to think about conserving water or reducing water use, it makes sense to look first at the largest pieces of the pie to see how could we reduce water use in these areas. And so with this background, let's go look at water conservation. And water conservation is a tool that allows you to stretch the water resources that you have today, and you can stretch them significantly with conservation, through zerriscaping and other types of landscaping that uses less water. The city has been doing a lot to reduce water use, and you can see that on the graph. The red line represents the total water use divided by the city's population. So in 2011, the total water use per capita was 208, but you've reduced down to 176 in 2015, which is a significant reduction. And if you look only at single-family residential use, which is one of the largest components of your water use, you've gone from 106 gallons per capita per day down to 85 gallons per capita per day. And there are additional opportunities for water reductions through conservation. The city has recently organized a committee, a water conservation committee, to look at water conservation and, you know, talk with citizens and explore ways to reduce water use, and they've just gotten a good start, but we're looking forward to seeing what kind of recommendations they come forward to recommend. There are additional opportunities for obtaining water rights and water resources for the city of Goodyear, and some of that potential is in what we would call regional solutions, where you might partner with other communities in the West Valley to identify and purchase and construct infrastructure that would take water from its source and deliver it to the city of Goodyear, as well as other municipalities. And so we would encourage the city to remain connected with other communities in the West Valley, to look for and work together to find ways to obtain additional water supplies that would benefit the city. So at this point in the presentation, are there any questions that you have at this time based on the master planning purpose, or planning areas, or water resources?
Anybody? No? I think we're all --
I'll just wait. All right.
Okay. With that, I'll give it back to Lisa.
So, we spent this first part of the project identifying the resources, identifying the demand and the projected growth of the city and understanding what the needs will be. The second part of the project, or of the master plan, as I noted, is identifying what those capital projects are for growth. And first, I'll start off with the capital projects identified in the plan relating to water. So, we looked at the water supply, as Richard said, and with the 13,191 acre-feet of water that's available to the city, we identified that water production wells, additional water production wells would be required in Planning Area 2. This will continue to support use of that production in those areas and maximize the use of that 13,000-plus acre-feet. But beyond that, we identified, as Richard noted, that we would need surface water brought to the city for future growth. And so with that, we looked at options to bring forth surface water projects or treatment plants to the city, so now I'll present those five options to you. Our first option that we identified for cap water supply is actually a connection to the Epcor existing line at the north end of the city. It includes approximately five and a half miles of pipeline connecting to the Epcor distribution system. It is a limited solution, it provides only up to 5 MGD capacity. Require some additional treatment at a facility in the northwest part of town due to the length of distance from the original treatment up at White Tanks. So, water supply option 1 provides a limited finished water supply connection to a northwest Cap water supply option 2 delivers finished water from Epcor Water Treatment to a northwest treatment location. This would involve the construction of a Goodyear-owned line all the way up at White Tanks. It would be 12 miles of pipeline from the Epcor Water Treatment Plant to the city. It provides upwards of 6.7 MGD capacity, but would also require additional treatment due to the length of transmission at a location in the northwest part of the city. The third option that we've identified is would deliver raw water from the Beardsley Canal to a central treatment location. As shown on the map, we would connect into the Beardsley Canal, install almost 13 miles of pipeline from the Beardsley Canal to Goodyear. This option, in fact, provides the 8 MGD capacity required in Phase 1, and it's proposed to be a new Goodyear water treatment plant located near the existing Goodyear water Option 4 also delivers water from the Beardsley Canal to a northwest treatment location. Again, provides the 8 MGD capacity in Phase 1. It's approximately eight miles of pipeline from Beardsley Canal to a new water treatment location, to be determined there in the northwest part of town. And the fifth option identified in the plan delivers raw water from SRP infrastructure to a central treatment location. Also provides 8 MG capacity, 8 MGD capacity in Phase 1, and requires the installation of seven and a half miles of pipeline from the SRP pipeline, and includes the new water treatment plant to be located near the Goodyear water reclamation facility. As I mentioned before I described the five options, those five options are still under consideration by the city and Corolla, and we're in the process of using this evaluation criteria to consider the best available option for the city. While these four criteria are not nearly all-inclusive, they're a good start for us to consider, and that includes the level of control of the surface water treatment and delivery, the cost of each option, the technical feasibility of each option, and also opportunities for future expansion. And as I noted, this is not all-inclusive list, and we would also ask for your feedback if there's any criteria that the mayor and council feel should be taken into consideration as we make our final decision.
I'm going to stop you, because --
I appreciate the information. I think what would be very helpful, at least for me, is you have the cost, number one, but I always like to see for each option you have in there, not just the technical feasibility, but what's the upside of going with it? What's the downside? Okay? Every option's got a plus and a minus to it. So I think it would be helpful to lay all of that out, not only the cost, but the upside downside is, as well as whether you have future capabilities of expanding on those options. But I'd like to see that, because you try to weigh it all out, and then with all the information you have, you're trying to make forward, make the best decision you have. But I think it's very helpful, because everything has an upside and a downside, which one is the best option there in long term. So that would be helpful.
I agree with you, Joe. I think that would help as we're looking at each of these solutions, where we should go. It is hard to bring it all in mind, and of course, cost is paramount for the future. So, does anybody else feel like, as long as we're on that subject, and we can let them go on, and, okay, all right?
And mayor and council, yeah, we definitely, as we look in depth at each of these options, like Lisa mentioned, this is just sort of the umbrella of -- like Lisa mentioned, this is just sort of the umbrella of the criteria that we'll be using.
We realize you're not quite there, but I think they want to request it early on so that when we do get the next time you come back to us, that that will be part of it.
Yeah, there'll be a pro and con discussion, of course.
So we'll add those into our next presentation. Moving on to wastewater, we've identified...
You're right there. Anybody else on that last part here? You're hesitating.
Oh, I just don't know where to ask all my questions.
Well, then let's just wait.
But I will say that I did notice as I was delving into this, diving into this book, and you guys are so smart, and I feel really stupid, but let me tell you, this was really incredible work that you did. And there are, it's obvious that you do have some of those pros and cons for each option, but it is very difficult to decipher putting them all together. You know, as I tried to read through this and write my notes and go back, you know, it's like you guys have been in this, so I certainly, with Joe, you know, having that bulleted out of saying, here's option one, option two, and even you had mentioned option one, kind of leads into option two, but putting those things together, showing what the pros and cons are and the benefit of the extra amount of money that may have to be spent for that option, but in the scenario that it's more pro than con, I get, you know, it may cost us more for one option, but maybe the pros are more highlighted, and so it makes more sense. And I think seeing it in that way will definitely be beneficial.
Go ahead. We'll definitely get that for you. Any other questions on water? All right. Molly?
My question is regarding the Beardsley Canal. I know it's one of the main MWD, the water delivery system. Are we going to be, are we going to be challenged by using the Beardsley Canal to move our water? Is it going, will it, will that, will some of the costs be less because the canal is already there and we wouldn't have to build a pipeline?
Certainly. You know, as we look at each of the options, obviously, if there's infrastructure in place that can be used, there'll be an opportunity for some savings in the project. The challenge for us is to bring that raw water for treatment to a location that makes sense for us.
We don't have anything up there.
Correct.
Yeah, just the Epcores up there.
Correct. One of the challenges with potable water is if you move it long distances, in some cases, as you see in some of the options, it has to be re-treated, so to speak.
Because it loses its nutrients and everything, because it's of the long distance.
The contact time between nutrients and chlorine build what is called disinfection by products, which you don't want in the water.
All right. So when you come back and you do give us possibly estimates on these projects, will you also include or let us know what is existing that we could use now and just connect to rather than us building everything ourselves?
Correct. The study, each of the options takes into account the existing infrastructure, of course.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess I'm with Councilman Pizzillo as well on this.
We're talking about trying conversation. You can see how hard this is. I'm going to just put this out to council. You know, when we have, we don't have to retreat, but it's very difficult. So I am going to notify if somebody's going like this.
Okay. Well, I agree with Joe. One thing that also concerns me is we're looking for probably an agreement, it looks like for forty years down the road. I mean, we're looking to go to 2040. So I'm concerned that the agreement we have is something that is long-term in nature, that whatever partners we select is someone that has been around and will be around for a while, because what I don't want to see is happen is we build a pipeline one way and then one company is sold or changed, and then now we're dealing with a new partner and we don't have an option then, you know. So that's my concern when we're looking at these options, is the other partner and what they're willing to work with us.
Mayor and council, controlling reliability are going to be major factors in the decision, yes.
Okay. That was huge, and I was reading, especially when it came with Epcor and certain partnerships. You know, you wondered if Goodyear will be able to take care of its destiny, and we need to partner.
That's what this is all about.
Exactly. And so that's, it's about our destiny. And so, you know, that control issue is huge, and I certainly saw that. I also saw that where you had that our water treatment and our own water campuses really were a positive for us to keep control over and to build upon. I thought that was interesting, too.
Bill, did you have something? Okay. So the plan also identified capital growth projects for wastewater. And not shown explicitly on this map is a collection of sewer main upgrades and new installations that would get a little bit lost in this map. So those are included in the plan, but worth noting on the wastewater recommendations are upgrades to your three facilities. We noted that in 2020, upgrades would be required at your Goodyear plant as well as your Rainbow Valley plant. And then looking at flows generated by 2025 capacity upgrades, a second set of upgrades would be required at Goodyear and then at Corgut. And just so that we're clear, as the Rainbow Valley plant, just want to make sure that we recognize that's actually in Planning Area Three, it's not actually in Rainbow Valley. So that is, will be used to continue to serve the folks in Water Planning Area Three.
Drop your voice down. I'm losing it all.
Okay.
I get the first part, and the last part, it kind of fades away.
Sure. So just, I was clarifying that Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility is actually in Water Planning Area Three, and that shouldn't be confused. It is a future facility in Planning Area Four or Five.
So may I ask a question, please? All right. So I'm looking at all of the water planning areas, and I'm trying to visualize where they are exactly. So is Water Planning Area Five, does that encompass the Mobile area? And then Water Plan Four is just Pecos and Patterson Road? Is that correct?
Correct. Planning Area Four is just south of Pecos, all the way to...
Just south of Pecos and north of Patterson, or Hits Patterson?
Correct.
Okay. And do we have water there now? I know we have aquifers there.
There is, if you remember, one, maybe we should go back to that slide that shows the...
Yeah. It's confusing when we're trying to visualize where this actually is and what we're talking about.
There's one slide that shows the water that's available in that area that has been actually locked by developers.
Yes, I know that. Yeah, I remember that slide. I'm sorry. Yeah, I remember that part. But what I'm getting at is that if we were lucky enough to have someone that wanted to identify some of their holdings in the Mobile area, then we don't, they have water rights themselves as a developer, but we don't have anything down there as a city to move the water or store the water or...
Mayor and council, yes, you are correct. There is no infrastructure down there whatsoever.
Okay. So if we were to entertain inquiries in that area or even in the Rainbow Valley area or in Water Plan Area Four, then we have to, or Five, I'm sorry, Four and Five, we have to take into consideration, there's no infrastructure there at all.
Correct. Any solution to support growth in that area would have to include us trying to develop some infrastructure as well.
Okay. Very good.
Let me interject you. If there is a question you have, and we're going on, you're not thinking about what's coming and what we're talking about, because you're still thinking about the question you have. So please let me know that you have a question and you can't go forward. I know we have our rules and things, but it doesn't work if you're hung up on one of them and we're down two presentations. So just be sure you alert me, all right?
All right.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sure. So looking at long-range strategies and discussing a little bit farther about Water Planning Areas Four and Five, these projects and this growth is not estimated to happen immediately within the planning horizons of the project. However, we did take those into consideration. We would be remiss if we did not make recommendations for the city to keep the eye on the future for those areas. So a brief summary of looking at Water Areas, Planning Areas Four and Five, there's a projected population could be upwards of five-hundred thousand folks with a water demand of seventy-seven MGD, wastewater flow of thirty-five MGD, and estimated reclaimed water of thirty-one MGD. So there's significant opportunities, demands, potential in these areas again, but they're long-range strategies. Key recommendations that came out of the plan were for the city to look at developing recharge strategy for Rainbow Valley. Richard talked a little bit about the existing groundwater resources there. There's definitely a need to look beyond what exists today. Identify and acquire new renewable supplies independently or through regional partnerships. And then also make sure that we're asking our future folks in that area to maximize the benefits of reclaimed water, to take that into consideration as developers and new users come in that area, and make sure they're considering the benefits of reclaimed water in their planning.
Thank you, Lisa. So mayor and council, in summary, this plan is looking at the, has developed a list of infrastructure that needs to be built to support the growth, and we will be looking at adding those projects into our capital improvement program. Again, the key to sustaining growth in the city is to bring surface water. And as you saw in one of the slides, we start hitting that limit of the availability of water in Planning Area Two, in the Aquifer Planning Area Two, at about 2020. And so bringing water to the city in that timeframe is very important. So what we're recommending at this point is whatever solution it is that we implement is that we have water in the city within the next five years, surface water, that is. As you saw, conservation is really important, and more than anything, conservation by design, not just relying on the behavior of our citizens. But there are vast opportunities for outdoor conservation, as you saw, without really impacting the standard of living over our citizens, the quality of life. As you know, the Water Conservation Committee is in the midst of just learning everything about water, and we hope that in the near future, we start seeing some dialogue and eventually some recommendations to staff and eventually to council. As far as reclaimed water, it is important to be in tune with the fact that reclaimed water is most valuable if it returns to the tap. And nowadays, the way we do that is we put it in the ground and we recover it through wells. We have a feeling that in the near future, there'll be other options for us as well. So there are some next steps for us to move forward with satisfying the needs of the city, and I'll get into that in a second. So what's our vision for the next few years? We are reaching the end of 2016, and it's really important that we get, reach a major milestone, which is the adoption of the IWMP, and we've got to make sure that we incorporate all your comments and your vision into that plan, and that's why we're here today. Also, as we look at the next few years, we know that time moves really fast, and it's important to keep this effort moving towards the final goal of building or bringing a surface water solution to the city. The time between now and 2022 might seem ample, but the reality is that all of the options that we're looking at are very complex, and we'll need strategic and sustained effort to get them completed by that time. So there's really no time to waste, but we assure you that with your support, we can get it done. So essentially, the next two milestones to be accomplished are the adoption of the IWMP by mayor and council, and we'll be back to you, we're planning to come back to you later this month with a plan that incorporates all of your comments, and we will not have a final recommendation on the surface water solution at that point, but we will use your guidance to eventually, I shouldn't say eventually, but in the very near future, come back to you with a final recommendation and a discussion of the pros and cons of each option. Let's go to the next slide. So again, we ask you for your questions. Those are the topics that were discussed tonight, and after we get your comments, your questions in your direction, staff will have probably some additional questions for you.
Bill?
Javier and Lisa, thank you very much for the presentation. I was one-hundred percent understanding of everything we were at until probably your last about four sentences. So you're going to come back to us again with another presentation, but not any recommendations? And then you're going to come back a third time with, is that, did I track that right?
That is correct. What we'll do is we'll have to make sure that we've incorporated your vision of, in your comments, into this plan, and we will use, one key point is to get your comments related to the criteria that we'll be using to evaluate that surface water solution. We still have quite a bit of work ahead of us, not only developing the solution based on what's most beneficial for the city, but also developing a financial plan for that solution as well. And we don't want to come back to you until we have a solution that is complete.
Okay. So I'm struggling with, and I'll speak only for myself, I don't know what value I can add to your, to the work that you guys are going to, I mean, you and the team are the, you're the water experts. So I'm going to add zero value to that conversation, other than tell me what, tell me what the pros and cons are of each of the options, and tell me what it's going to cost, because I'm not going to add anything to that. So I'm, it sounds like we've got a little sense of urgency, but we're taking our time to get there. So I'm just, I'm trying to figure out that timeline, and it's just not, it's not making sense to me, and I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I don't know, so...
Let me add to that, too, Bill. Are there relationships that we're courting and we don't, we aren't there yet on some of the solutions of...
Mayor and council, that is correct. We've actually, we are working with the organizations that you saw as the options and getting to final discussion on terms of agreements or options for, that are the most beneficial to the city will also be part of the evaluation. So we're not there yet.
Okay. But that's, that's part of the reason why that the information is not where we want it or that where we can make a decision. Did you say something, Brian? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Stip. Great question. Where we're at today, so in work session, really trying to get additional input, and you know, we made notes as far as what we're adding for the attributes to be considered as we go through our evaluations. Very important we get this adopted. It's a plan, and that's why we're looking for, I believe it's November 21st. Once it's adopted, then from the plan, we start working it. It's a policy direction for staff to then finalize the different criteria, especially around surface water. But this entire plan, once it's adopted, we start working it. So it is, does require formal adoption, and the formal adoption does not require a specific alternative recommendation that comes after this. So that's why it'll be a subsequent step after adoption, presumably an adoption by council, if that helps.
Thank you.
Joe?
You know, I appreciate all the effort, because this is not an easy subject. One of the things, though, that comes to mind is we had the water committees already on the pass where we just brought ourselves up to where we were supposed to be, which included significant rate increases for five years. And I might be wrong, but it looks like the next five years after that, we're going to be quite a challenge. With that being said, and you have the upside downside of all these options, for me also it'd be very helpful, when we talk about cost, is impact overall to the rate structure to the city. And to me, it's also important, too, as we move forward, before we lock anything down, that somehow we get the citizens buying in to understand, which I believe they did when we had our first, you know, water committee, is that the second phase, when we start to go to, you know, above water and ground as opposed to wells, that there may be some more significant increases in order to maintain our water supply and to maintain growth. So I just make sure they don't get left behind as we move forward, because again, you're the experts, but my gut tells me this next group of raises will be significant to cover some of these capital projects. I just make sure all that stuff's taken into consideration.
Oh, you have something to add on his? Go ahead.
And I know we've got a longstanding policy of not, of the rate payers paying for all of the water infrastructure. However, I think we, we need to look at this water issue as this is a citywide problem. If we don't bring water in, the, the part of the city that doesn't, that is not served by the Goodyear Water System will die if this water doesn't come into the rest of the city. So this is a citywide issue. This isn't a rate issue or any, in my opinion. So if there's a economic impact of not doing anything, the, we always have a sixth option or seventh option of doing nothing. And if we did nothing, what will happen? What will our population end at? What will, I mean, there's a, there's a definite, that's an option. The option is to do nothing. And I think we need to know what that is and what the economic impact. So when we're talking about the future, what is the rate going to look like? What is this going to do for our economic development opportunities 10 years, or in 2020, we hit that first, the first wall? So what, what's going to happen beyond that? Maybe there's, maybe there's not enough time in three weeks to develop a, an answer to the question and a master plan, but I think that becomes an essential part of the discussion about how do we fund this going forward? You know, the majority of the people that are going to use this water, you know, are going to pay a much higher rate for it. However, there are some pieces of this that perhaps the entire city can, can cover the costs for, or can be part of, of that. And that obviously becomes a philosophical discussion that we get to have as a council, but I think it should be an option that we at least discuss, and then we'll know. And then, and then the third part of that is, if we choose to do nothing, what does that look like? Because all this is assuming that we want to grow to a half a million people. But if we say, hey, 200,000 is good enough, what does that look like? And obviously, that has a huge impact on people that bought land, but we should know what that looks like. We should know what zero looks like.
Not recommending zero, but.
No, I'm not either. But I think we should know what it looks like.
Because that's a fine line of how we, how this information gets out the public, and this is public. So how we paint the pictures, we want to, we don't want hysteria.
Right.
And we don't want to be negative to the developers, because the land, so we're being good stewards by thinking out to the future and slowly working to be able to acquire. So I think we have to be careful in some ways, but it would be nice to have partial that, the presentation, but let's not make it, let's just make it the road to accomplishment. I think we're all aware, if water goes away, we have thousands of years of Indian tribes and before that, that left areas, right? And you always say, where'd they go? How come that city's not there? Well, that's why the city's not there. They couldn't get food and they couldn't get water. So I think we all kind of know that basis. I think where I see everybody stuck is there's going to be so many decisions to make, it's all going to cost. So we're ones that are going to have to say, yeah, I agree with you. And I'm with Bill, you are the experts, and I trust, I trust you. I trust the department. So far, excellent, the way we've moved water. So we're kind of all up here, you feel that way? Everybody kind of feels that way, and I think most of us understood the presentation. What's valuable is we do have a book that we can research it and look at it, and it's our responsibility then, to when you say something, that we go to that index and we find it and we review it and look at it again. So go ahead.
So I just want to start from the beginning. Some of the questions that were in my mind, which we've started to, to tackle a little bit, and you know, when I looked at our current CIP, it's our 10-year CIP, I mean, in water alone, we have $164 million price tag for 2025. And, and I know that does not include surface water. So, correct? So stop me if I'm saying something wrong, say, no, that's not right. Please tell me if I'm misunderstanding something. Because if I look at this, and it's already 164 million, does, does this include or does this partially include some of the, some of the points that get us to the surface water? Is that in here?
Mayor and Councilmember Osborne, our IIP includes a surface water solution, but not necessarily exactly what it is that we're going to propose. We don't know yet.
Right.
But no, there's quite a bit of work ahead of us, no question.
Okay.
Again, those are these relationships that you're building, and the conversation that's going on behind the scenes that we're really not a part of. And so there kind of be tricks in between here. It's hard to present when you really don't know, but in fact of the matter, if I'm correct, the processes and what you're going through are the same processes the other side of the valley had to do to get where they are. They had relationships with different people, different cities, and that's how they came together. And so we're in that position that they were years ago, and we're moving on to have.
I'm just asking these questions because I'm, I'm making sure I'm not doubling numbers or I'm not adding, or I'm not putting enough. So that's why I'm asking those simple questions. And obviously, it's, it's going to be interesting and a challenge. Some of the, some of the things that, as you put together, when you come back to us the next time, I noticed in here, there were certain things of, that you stated from the beginning, what we should be doing, some of, some thoughts that you gave was, was fully funding the CIP allocation, which I guess we haven't been doing from what I understand. It was one of the items that was in here. Another one was something to do with, with EPCOR. And, and I, I wonder if there's certain solutions that we do front-loading, like say for EPCOR, just to take care of 10 years, why would we not want to fully use that for the next 20 rather than coming up with a, a separate solution? And so, you know, I'd like to see what that means. And I, I think rather than asking some of these questions, because I'm trying to stay above rather than digging deep into the weeds of things that, you know, I don't want to waste our time without, I'm going to just email you all of my notes and ask you, you know, help me sort through some of these things. Okay, Javier? And, you know, I really do appreciate what you, what you've brought to us, and, you know, something that we've discussed in Amo and something that we've all known for 100 years that Arizona does, it is relationship. It is about, about give and, give and take. And, and it's certainly going to be on our citizens also, because a lot of the things that were stated in here as things for the future are those zero scape landscaping. But then it also talked about not using recharged water for your parks and for things like that. So then the question is, well, what are they going to be watered with? You know? And, and so those are the things, if we're asking citizens not to have grass in their yards and this and that, we are going to have to have them in parks and things like that. But if we also say, as a suggestion, don't use, you know, the remediated water or recharged water for parks, well, then what are we going to water them with? You know? And so it's going to be a real interesting.
That's what we're expecting.
Give and take, yeah.
That's where we're paying the big bucks here. Okay, Miss, this is the expectation we have of them. And they have people that are on the development side, they know the needs and wants there, and they have all the facts. And so I, I think this, this has produced a little bit of anxiety, I can hear it, but hey, that's just the name of the game of being on a council. So we're again, I guess they're looking for some, a little more structure as far as an estimate on cost, and I know that isn't easy to do on some of these solutions, because you said whatever, you know, we think is where we want to go, where we think it's going to be, where we are going to be looking at the budget. But we have to think about the public, we have to think about growing our city, about keeping it the most livable city and all America cities. We have that whole globe here to think about, so.
And lastly, Georgia, can I just, my last comment was, and I, I agree with Bill, we aren't the experts and certainly need you to guide us on these things. But after I went through all this and I read all this and I, and I saw 760,000 people that build out, and I, I just had to stop. And, and you know, it is that anxiety and is it that, that hesitation stopped me for a moment, and I thought, is that the moral thing that we should be doing in a desert to be saying, we're going to put 760,000 people here and we're not sure how we're going to have the water for them? So that really, it did stop me, and I had to stop and think about it. So it's not zero, but it's like, are we doing the right thing? And so, so we have to make sure that, that we are for the next 100 years.
Well, those are numbers, too. It's number by land mass, and development changes that a great deal of, of what and what type of development comes in and it, with the density. So, so that's a number. I guess that's a number worked on the man, land mass, but it doesn't, it isn't in stone.
In stone, yeah.
Okay? And that is why we have planning commissions, and that's why we constantly every year come back with something else. So, so don't let it alarm you to that point. Molly?
I want to thank you for including water planning areas four and five, because I envisioned someday that that Rainbow Valley and all the way over to Mobile will be a wonderful place for folks to build and to live, because it's, the, just being out in that desert is really amazing. I just want to be sure that we, as a city, are open to developers who do come and want to talk to us possibly to start a development in some of those areas. If we are able to work with them and, and so that, because if we're telling everyone we've got these big areas that 520,000 people can live in, but we have absolutely no infrastructure, and we know we, as a city, cannot afford to put that infrastructure in, but hopefully we'll have developers with big pockets who know, when they come to talk to us, that they will have to put the infrastructure in somehow, and that we, as a city, have a plan or an idea, or we have a way to help them accomplish what they're trying to do. And because that area over there, if I recall correctly, the aquifer went dry in that area, did it not, years and years ago? It used to be, or maybe I'm thinking of the one up in Rainbow Valley where all of the orange groves were, and it, they had wonderful acreage of beautiful orange trees. And then the aquifer went dry and nothing was done. And now we have farmers leasing the land now today, doing their cotton, and it's where the cows came on the road, remember? So, yeah, so, that's, yeah, we don't want to forget that. But I just would like us to be able to have conversations with them, because we know this is just really, we're no different than, than Cave Creek or the areas way out in the desert, and somehow they came together and they got water and sewer to their residents and to their people. And we just have to be real creative and, and just be real open and work on really amazing partnerships so we can accomplish that.
Mayor and Council, be sure that we, we, we certainly would support any of your priorities. One of the key things, and I mentioned smart growth policies, and, but smart growth is really us having a plan and seeing how those developers fit into the plan and help them fit into that plan.
The other thing we didn't talk about is, do you, do you put a percentage in the costing on technology? Because new technology sometimes is, comes forth and, and it lessens it, and I just, out of just curiosity, do they ever do a certain figure about 30 years out that there might be technology, that they're 2%, 5%? I just, I'd be curious of that.
Mayor and Council, it, it would be very difficult to be in tune to what's going to happen as far as technology in the next 30 years, but we do know that it's quite a bit of an effort on groundwater technology and cleanup of, you know, bad wa, bad quality water. So there are a lot of options, and I men, I did mention that in the future, we will have options that we're not even aware of at this point. The key is to stay in tune with those.
Well, and I think the council, you talked about going out to areas further out, I think we all talked about, that we want to sort of develop within those, within certain areas, and we do want sprawl. And if a big opportunity came that we could substantiate, that'd be something different. But I think everybody's on the, on the, I think on the same pattern of just trying to finish out part of the area that's vacant in certain areas, so. Anything else? Yes, Sherilyn.
I just kind of let a comment on a couple of things that have been said. Specifically, thank you for commenting on that, that figure of 760,000. I kind of looked at it and I took a breath and I put it aside, because that's huge. And for those of us, you know, in 1980, when I came out there, there were 2,875 people, including the prison. This is really science fiction, kind of in my mind. So I had to take a deep breath over that one as well. And I agree with Wally in that it's good that we are taking in consideration four and five acknowledging, but you know, when we're talking about 2020, psychologically, it seems very far away, but it's not. And I mean, that defines the urgency, that's four years, you know? And so cities are not known for working at warp speed. And, well, I, but four years is kind of warp speed in, in, in the industry, in the, this particular arena. That, that's not a long time. So I think that bringing to our attention that there is some urgency, that we do have to, and we, it's incumbent upon us to plan further out than that so that we can accommodate the growth, because just saying woe is not going to stop people from wanting to move here. We're going to have to be very, creative is a good word, but attentive to it. You know, we, we can't just hear it once and, and then say, oh, well, let those guys go do it. I mean, so those were just the comments that came across my mind as we were, as we were talking about these things. It's, and I do thank you for this three-inch binder.
Thank you.
Anything else? Brian, do you have anything? Okay, go ahead.
Just one more slide. You know, Mayor and Council, I'm not sure if you have any more comments. There's been great discussion, and we thank you for that. One of the main things that we wanted to get out of this, out of this presentation was a discussion on the criteria for the surface water solution. You've given us some, some great input, and we will take that and we'll, we'll see what we come up with.
Going to have to do what we have to do.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we'll look at all options.
You know, we'll, we'll be given options, but this is the direction we're going, so.
And again, we'll be back later this month incorporating your comments and hopefully get a final adoption of the plan, and we can go at looking at the different options and come back with a final recommendation.
Some directions on that if you come back, some of the needs that the council, they definitely had some pertinent information, if I'd like to have whatever you have at that time that could fulfill that. Appreciate it. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Any, anything else that, Brian, I'm going to, I'm going to adjourn this meeting in a moment.
Oh, not on this topic, just to, council comments, and then I have a few announcements.
Bill?
I have a question or request for the manager. Earlier that, sorry, a week ago, some information was provided to the Arizona Fire Service regarding a change to the C of N holders in Maricopa County, and I would request that the manager send information out to the council this week, giving you an update on what that looks like and for future consideration of a future agenda item.
So what is it, Bill? I'm sorry.
There's, the Arizona Fire Service last week was notified that there's a new C of N application.
Certificate of need?
Yeah, necessity, application by a private provider. And I'm obviously fully aware of it, no one else on the council is. I'm asking the manager to communicate that information to everybody, and then we can consider that for possible future action.
Thank you, Bill, and I sent you a little note, I said, kind of giving a heads up, but there's a lot of things connected with that, and I want to make sure the city manager comes back at the time, gives them all that other information to do with this, okay? And, and what it's composed of and what it does, all right? So, Sheri?
And to follow up, obviously, I haven't read it, but it, are we going to then discuss that? Because I know it keeps getting pushed off, the ambulance with the fire station study, is that all going to come back together? Kind of like as a package, so we know what we're doing?
I've got to see if we can.
So the fire station study will be back to council and. So the fire station study will be back to council in December, and that's when we'll have locations, timing, you know, phasing, and, and then also some of the financial parts of it as well. We are looking at doing the financial modeling for the, for CON as we do our revenue forecast. That is to be in January. That's proposed now. So that's, that's where we're at relative to that right now. But the fire station study will be completed, be presented to council December. And then January was proposed to come back with another financial model for the CON as we get more information.
So it's all general money, general.
I wasn't sure if it's all going to be together or not.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll be separate. We'll bring, but we can bring them kind of back together again as it relates to funding strategies, financing, those types of things.
Brian?
I had a citizen, I had a citizen ask me for a couple of questions, and one of them I couldn't answer, and one of them was a pretty good idea. The question was, he lives in Estrella, and he knows, you know, all the potential new homes that will be eventually going there over the next, you know, five years or so, 10. And he said, what's going on with the bridge, though? How are you going to be able to have that many people going up and down the hill on, not on the Cotton Lane Bridge, but on the Estrella Bridge? And will that be widened? And when's that going to happen? And was, and I was like, oh, you know, I did not have an answer for him on that. And it wasn't even on my radar. So I thought, you know what? I will find out for you and get back to you. The other statement he had was, you know, it would be really nice if on your website, you guys had something that said, these are the projects that are under construction. You know, if, if we had even a little icon that says, what is that building? You know, and, and citizen could go click on it, they would say, oh, that was the Michael Lewis company and it was being built. Or, oh, that was this, you know, something that, you know, people always want to know, what, what's, what is going on or what's being built? And so I, I was like, okay, I would, would pass that on.
You don't have anything to talk to them about in your own private.
You know, he was asking me about all kinds of things, and I was able to tell him, but it was like, huh. He said, it would be nice if that was on the website. So I just wanted to extend that. But I, really, he, he got me with the question on the bridge.
Mayor and Council, and I know we're, it's not an agenda item, but we do have a long-term plan for bridge widenings and things like that, and we'll make sure we can get, we can provide that to council.
Sheri?
Well, since we're talking about the road up to Estrella, there was also a question, I think I asked you about the median. When's that going to be, start being worked on?
Yes, and I believe, and I'll provide that back to you. There were some phasings on it south of MC 85 up to about the, before you cross the Gila, and then also south of the Gila. So we'll, we'll provide that to you. You bet.
Any other questions? Okay, no other requests, City Manager?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have announcements, but I didn't want to get ahead of you. So just a couple of announcements. Goodyear gained, that we had eight neighborhoods involved this past Saturday, so special thanks to several people that, that were part of that, and Christina Plant certainly did a great job of working with Neighborhood Services and Sergeant Broughton from Community Services as well. But it was great to get out there and, and have a chance to visit with the neighbors, and we got, got some different inputs and follow-ups that will be associated with that. I know the fire chief drove you around, Mayor, to all the different neighborhoods and.
He was the lucky one that got me that day.
Yep, he was your chauffeur, but, but again, a great event. Fifth, fifth annual chalk art in the park, just real quickly. 30 artists worked on that. And we actually interviewed the respondents then, and 96% of them, of the 1,200 in attendance rated it excellent or above average. So it's always good to get that kind of feedback. Certainly, we want those that, if there are things we can do better, we like to get those as well. But that was a very good and.
Brian, can you have, when Guilene takes the pictures, send them to everybody? Because they were really beautiful, but they weren't done when I was there.
Yes, we'll, we'll follow up on the photos for that. And the regional household hazardous waste drop-off, we actually had 624 vehicles that went through that. Really good feedback, and the wait times were down four, four to 13 minutes once they were on site. We did get one comment on the egress out of there. We understand that, and we, we will be looking at that. So I think you all received an email on that. That's certainly something we're looking at.
I happen to.
Once you were on-premise, it worked great. It was getting out of there that, I think, posed some challenges. Okay. But do, do appreciate getting that input, because that helps us out the next time. Reminder, and I won't get into politics, but tomorrow's election day, but what I did do if.
Thank God, it's going to be over.
What I do have, if council's interested, before you head out, the polling places, if you get asked by the residents, we can email it to you as well. City Hall is not a polling place.
Yes.
But we do have 11 that are within the Goodyear area. So I have these if you'd like to have those before you head out. And finally, Veterans Day, Friday, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. But we also have our Veterans Day tribute at the Goodyear Ballpark. So that will have the veteran-created piece of art that'll be unveiled there. And the event begins at 2:00 with a formal tribute program to start at 3:15. Opening remarks by Mayor Lord, keynote by retired Lieutenant Colonel David Fitzgerald and Dr. Donna Fitzgerald. But as always, we'll have the community vendors, flag garden, military displays, mobile museum, themed chalk art, veteran art dedication and youth performances. So it's a busy day. So if you're able to attend that, great, but we're looking forward to that. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you, Council, for all your input tonight. Really appreciate it. And thank you for the presentations, and thank you for all the work you're doing and that you're going to be doing. So this is an ongoing. The next meeting will be a work session, a regular meeting on November 14th. So this meeting is adjourned.